Good evening. Welcome to the August 24, 2021 Combined Work Session and Regular Meeting of the Gaston County Board of Commissioners. My name is Tom Kegger. I serve as Chairman of the Board as well as Commissioner for the Gastonia Township. I'd like to welcome our viewers and thank Spectrum Cable and AT&amp;T for making this possible for our citizens. For our television audience, I'd like to present your county commissioners, beginning on my far right.
Alan Fraley, Chair of Township.
Good evening, Chad Brown, Riverbend Township.
Bob Hovis, Crowder's Mountain Township.
Good evening, Tracy Philbeck, Dallas Township.
Good evening, I'm Ronnie Worley, South Point Township.
And at this time, I'd like to present Commissioner Kim Johnson. She's joining us via telephone. Good evening, Commissioner Johnson.
Good evening, everyone.
All right, she's with us. If we would, would everybody please rise for the invocation by Commissioner Worley and followed by the Pledge of Allegiance led by Commissioner Chad Brown.
Would you pray with me. Dear Heavenly Father, our need for you is greater today than ever. As we face uncertain times, we need our hope restored. We need to be reminded of your constant and complete healing grace and love for us. As we reach out to you, we pray that you help us to heal the burdens of our neighborhoods, our county, our state, and our country and our world, and help us be faithful in prayer and put our hope in you, Lord. Amen.
Could you please join me in the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everyone. I'll now call the, call the order the August 24 rescheduled work session. Item A, Commissioner Fraley, Board of Commissioners Resolution Recognizing Judge Robert William Kirby for his many contributions to Gaston County and to dedicate and rename the Fourth Floor Jury Assembly Room in the Gaston County Courthouse in his honor. Commissioner Fraley, good evening.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Could I have the Kirby family, anybody that's here in attendance, please come up and stand with me? Friends, family. First, I would like to start off by thanking a couple people. One, Mr. James Beam, who's behind with you guys. It was actually his idea. He brought it to me and I think maybe he felt a little guilty for all those uninvited times he went swimming in y'all's pool through the years. But thank you, James. I appreciate it. I'd also like to thank Annette Carter out here. She did a lot of the research and legwork along with Donna to get this resolution ready. And also, I would like to thank my fellow commissioners that unanimously supported this action. I think I'll go ahead and unveil this so you guys will have something to look at other than me while I'm reading this resolution. I'd like for y'all to step around here if you can't see it, but this will be permanently placed at the Jury Assembly Room on the fourth floor. And I'll read the resolution and then I think Judge Caldwell's gonna have a few words to say. And Greg, I think you're gonna say some words on behalf of the families. Okay. Okay. In memoriam Judge Robert William Kirby. Whereas, the Honorable Judge Robert William Kirby, longtime resident of Gaston County, was born October 16, 1928, and was the son of a Methodist minister, Reverend Cicero W. Kirby and Ruth McPhail Kirby. And whereas, before his passing on January 23, 2021, Judge Kirby resided in Cherryville for more than five decades, where he and June, his late wife of 59 years, raised their three sons, Robert Junior, Chris, and Greg. He was a faithful and active member of the First United Methodist Church of Cherryville, happens to be my church. Whereas, Judge Kirby served in the U.S. Army from 1952 to 1954. He earned his Bachelor of Arts degree from High Point University and his law degree from the University of North Carolina School of Law. He practiced law in Gastonia and Cherryville prior to being appointed as Gaston County Solicitor. He became a District Court Judge in 1968 and was elected as Superior Court Judge for the 27A Judicial District in 1974. He remained on the Superior Court bench until he retired in 2000. After retirement, he held court sometimes as emergency judge and also developed a successful mediation practice. And whereas, he was known by his family and friends as Judge or Bob, and is remembered by many of his colleagues and friends as being kind, easygoing, gracious to all the citizens who appeared in front of him. According to Cherryville City Manager Jeff Cash, he was a highly respected man who for years swore in municipal officials to new terms. And whereas, Judge Kirby also played an instrumental role in the construction of the current courthouse campus. His leadership and common sense approach helped navigate many complex issues surrounding the project, fostering collaboration throughout the process and ensuring its successful completion in 1998. And whereas, former Senior Resident Superior Court Judge Jesse Caldwell remarked when learning of his death that all of the judges he had ever known or known of in the past, in his past 48 years, Judge Robert Kirby was the most beloved, most respected, and most admired. He was an excellent judge, not only because of his temperament, but by reason of his understanding of human nature, keen sense of fairness, and common sense. Now, therefore be it resolved that the Gaston County Board of Commissioners expresses its heartfelt appreciation for Judge Kirby and the many contributions to Gaston County and finds it most fitting to posthumously, I know I messed that one up, but close enough, right, recognize him by naming the Fourth Floor Jury Room located in the Gaston County Courthouse as Judge Robert Kirby, Judge Robert William Kirby Jury Assembly Room, while remembering and honoring him as a judge for the people and for example, he's set for generations of future leaders to be adopted the 24th day of August 2021. Jesse, if you would, could you come up and say a few words?
Yes, sir. Thank you, Commissioner Fraley. When I think about Judge Kirby, who I knew for almost 50 years, I think about him being a family man in several concentric circles. First of all, his family, some of whom are here tonight, how he loved his family. Those of us who appeared in front of him knew when he would start talking in court, getting ready to send somebody, he talked about, "I've got three boys," and I, and he would, he talked about his family. He talked about his beloved June, and he, he was a family man. He had another family outside of that. That was the courthouse family. He was beloved. He was, there's never been a judge in this county, I've been here almost 50 years, that was beloved by, by the staff, the courthouse staff, and the lawyers, and is Judge Kirby. That smile, that smile on that picture there, and that gentle way you, when you walked into court and you saw Judge Kirby, you just kind of relaxed. You, you just knew that he was, he was the best Superior Court Judge around. And in his courthouse family was Pat West that he hired as his assistant. She's, she was invited. She was ill. She called me today. Donna Buff saying that she appreciated you all inviting her. She's, she's watching it though. And, but his courthouse family, and then the wider family of the community. He loved Cherryville. He loved Gaston County. And he, he saw a need for this county. He was a visionary. He saw a need that we needed a new courthouse. And quite frankly, at the time, it was pretty dilapidated. Started in 1912 and had four additions. Judge Phillips knows this. We had stairways that led to nowhere. There were like 50 or 60 air conditioning and heating units. Heat came on in, in August and the air conditioning came on in January. We had a bunch of Girl Scouts in there one day and a tile fell down in courtroom A and hit one of them on the head. It was, it was bad. And Judge Kirby knew that not only do we need a new courthouse, but we needed something that would last for the next century. And he spearheaded the effort to get this courthouse. We would not be in this courthouse if it weren't for Judge Kirby. And he negotiated a deal with the city. Not only did they exchange the property, we, the county gave the city the old courthouse next to City Hall. They gave us this property next to the water plant and negotiated an arrangement where if in the future we need an annex and the city has, has left the water plant, that we would have access to that. He ensured that a fifth floor was built even though we didn't need it at the time. It's already plumbed and wired and ready for future decades of service. A visionary, and not just a visionary, but he knew how to get things done. You can have dreamers, but they don't know how to effectuate things. And Judge Kirby, with his smile and his gentle ways, provided strong leadership in working, building consensus with the commissioners over a period of time. And some commissioners would leave and new ones would come on and he would win them over. And he had the support of the, of the Chief District Court Judge, Ralph Phillips. His son is our Senior Resident Superior Court Judge today, David Phillips, and he's here tonight, as is our other Judge Jesse Caldwell III. And Judge Phillips, who was a visionary in his own right at the old courthouse, even though it was dilapidated, he, he got the commissioners to build a brand-new courtroom and it, after he died, they even named it after him and put a portrait there. And that portrait, when we moved here to the new courthouse in 98, that portrait now rests in Judge Phillips' chambers. And Judge Tim Patty, after Judge Phillips' death, was Chief District Court Judge. Judge Harley Gaston took over after that, and he used his experience as a county commissioner and the county attorney before that, and somebody who knew about the need for the courthouse going back to the 50s. He had articles about it. And you all have honored Judge Gaston as well by naming this public forum after him. To my knowledge, this is only the, the third time that you all have honored a judge in the courthouse facility. Judge Phillips with the courtroom G in the portrait, Judge Gaston with his public forum being named after him, and Judge Kirby for the Jury Assembly Room. And so, he, he saw a need and he made sure that, he worked with the architects and he, he, he made sure that the facility was, was utilitarian and, and attractive but not opulent. He didn't think a public building should be lavish and look like the Taj Mahal. It's a building of the people, but he wanted it attractive and a place that you could respect when you looked at it and, and user-friendly. And he spent untold hours working with officials on that. And how fitting it is that, that our great leadership with this county commission sees fit to honor Judge Robert Kirby, a son of Gaston County, not by birth because he was a PK, a preacher's kid, and his daddy was a Methodist preacher, although his daddy served as district superintendent here in the 50s. And so, that's where he, he, he had his introduction to Gaston County. But my point is, it's so appropriate that you all are honoring him and on behalf of the court system and the people of this county who are here tonight and watching, and those who are not even watching, we thank you for what you are doing to honor this, this dedicated public servant. And I thank Commissioner Fraley for the opportunity to say these words. I thank my friend James Beam for spearheading this. And God bless all of you in what you do. Thank you.
My name is Greg Kirby. I'm Judge Kirby's middle son. I won't say many words because these gentlemen have covered it all. I do want to thank James for working so hard for our family. This has been in the works for an extended period of time. And as Jesse said, we recall as children visiting our father in the courthouse and taking the stairwell to nowhere many times. And so, he, he worked tirelessly to have this building come to fruition. And I still, I don't recall if we still have the gold shovel, but he was here for the groundbreaking. And those were exciting times for him. And he did love Gaston County. He loved Cherryville, his adopted home. But most especially, he loved being a judge. And he would have stayed here until the end of time. But as all things are, good things have to come to an end eventually. And he went on and had a successful career as a mediator. But on behalf of the family, the Kirby family, those of us that are here and those that could not attend, we thank the county commissioners, James Beam, Alan, Jesse. Thank you so much for the kind words. And we're just thrilled with this honor. And thank you very much.
Mr. Chairman, can I say one more thing? I would be negligent in failing to say that Judge Kirby worked tirelessly with Annette Carter, our friend and our public servant, Annette Carter, who chaired the school bond referendum that passed. There were two that did not pass before that. She got it to pass. And he worked hand in glove with her in that. And she's here tonight. And he worked so closely with her and, and loved the great job she did. So, thank you for letting me add that to the bottom line.
All right. Thank you very much. We have one more recognition before everybody takes off. This one is presented by Commissioner Hovis, and it's a Board of Commission Resolution honoring Judge Jesse B. Caldwell III upon his retirement as Senior Resident Superior Court Judge.
If Mr. Judge Caldwell will please join me, and anyone wishing to join us, it's lovely to come up here to the podium. It's, it's only appropriate that on this night, when we're recognizing the work of Judge Kirby, that we also recognize the work of one of his close fellow judges, a gentleman who obviously knows him extremely well. I don't know if it's just the Methodist connection, but it seems like that river runs pretty deep in Gaston County. And I'm proud as Alan to be a member of the Methodist Church. But outside of that, let me read this proclamation, a resolution honoring Judge Jesse B. Caldwell, Senior Resident Superior Court Judge Retired. Whereas, the Honorable Jesse B. Caldwell III retired as Superior Court Judge for Gaston County and North Carolina on May 28, 2021, after 28 years on the bench. His distinguished career as a Superior Court Judge was preceded by 20 years of service as a private attorney and a public defender in Gaston County. He grew up in Gastonia and graduated from Hunter Huss High School. A loving father and husband, he has four children with wife Gloria and three grandchildren. And whereas, he obtained his Bachelor of Arts in Political Science and Government in 1971 at the University of North Carolina Chapel Hill and graduated from the University of North Carolina Law School in 1973. And whereas, Judge Caldwell served as Superior Court Judge since 1993 and his Senior Resident Superior Court Judge for the 27, for 27- A Judicial District since 1995. He is a recent president of the North Carolina Conference of Superior Court Judges, a member of the North Carolina Dispute Resolution Commission, the Pattern Jury Instruction Committee, and has received the Trial Judge of the Year Award in 2020. And whereas, as Superior Court Resident Judge, he has graciously provided over the swearing-in of elected officials in Gaston County since 1996, officiating at more than 12 ceremonies during his long tenure. And whereas, Judge Caldwell's personal commitment and care for his community is reflected in his contributions to many organizations, including his service as the Criminal Justice Partnership Act Advisory Board, Gaston Community Action, Crisis Assistance Ministry, Gaston Hospice, Pioneer Girl Scouts Council, Habitat for Humanity, Horizon House, Gaston Alternatives, The Little Theater of Gastonia, the Gaston Lincoln Mental Health Advisory as Chairman. He currently serves as a member of the Rotary Club of Gastonia, the Advisory Board at Cornerstone Christian Center, and a trustee of the Hall Charitable Foundation. And whereas, he has taught classes at Gaston College and Gardner Web and was also an adjunct faculty member at the Charlotte School of Law, he also serves as lay preacher with the United Methodist Church and preaches at many churches across the western North Carolina area. And whereas, Judge Caldwell's service to Gaston County has earned him much deserved recognition, including the Family Advocate Award from the Gaston County Commission on the Family, the Citizen of the Year Award from the Gastonia Civitan Club, and the Martin Luther King Unity Award from Gaston Together. Now, therefore be it resolved that the Gaston County Board of Commissioners hereby recognizes and congratulates the Honorable Jesse B. Caldwell III upon his retirement as a Superior Court Judge for the 27A Judicial District. The Commission further extends its gratitude for his many notable contributions to Gaston County and wishes him continued success and health in his life and future endeavors. This to be adopted the 24th day of August at this meeting. And Judge Caldwell, I'd like to present this to you. And at the same time, this board is humbly appreciative of all that you've done for Gaston County, as many who have preceded you, and as many who will follow you. You've set a great example along the same lines of others we've spoken about here tonight. And it's just a pleasure to have known you in many different venues long before I was an elected official. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, sir. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Hovis. And I, I'm honored, I'm humbled, and members of the Commission and our other distinguished elected officials and honored guests and everybody. I, I, I'm a blessed man in many ways. And with my family, I have four children. And only one of the four could make it tonight, but being a weeknight, one lives in the eastern part of the state. Another one has two children. They're being fed and, and bathed and put to bed. And, and the other one had a class that got out at 5:00 at UNC Charlotte, couldn't get over here, but in time. But I appreciate my oldest son, Jesse Caldwell IV, who Governor Cooper appointed to take my place as Superior Court Judge. And I'm proud of the fact that I took Judge Kirby's slot when he, I neglected to say that earlier, when he, when he retired. But I, I appreciate so much your honoring me in this way. You know, when You know, when you do these things, you don't do it for acclaim or for credit or whatever. You just do it because it's the right thing to do, you know? But it is nice to be recognized and appreciated. I'll say this, whatever good I've done, not been able to do it by myself, obviously, the good Lord has strengthened me, but also the people I've worked with. The other seat, we have two seats. I've worked with four people in those seats, other Judge Hip, Judge Tim Paddy, Judge Robert Sumner, Judge David Phillips, and before any of them, Judge Robert Gaines. And none of us could have done any of that work without Trish Pewett. Trish is somewhere here. And Pat West before her, they were our judicial assistants, and they are the ones that kept us straight. And I have to say this, particularly as a young judge, I call Judge Kirby three to four times a week, asking him questions. And I would interrupt him and stuff, but he was so gracious to help me. And I just want to say one final thing in closing about...I look at members of this Commission, and I have a personal connection with every single one of you, a personal connection. Family, Commissioner Fraley's father, my father, we're dear friends. Commissioner Brown, all the Stanley people, Commissioner Phil Beck, his father, and all the Phil Beck's hardest-working people in Gaston County. Chairman Keager, our daughters have been dear friends since kindergarten, since school. Commissioner Curly, who was Trooper Curly, I mean Trooper Worley before he...and then Mayor Worley, and he would always invite me to Cramertown and all the Cramertown functions there. Commissioner Johnson, who's not here tonight, I worked with her when she was right out of high school into jail, when I was going in to see clients. And Dr. Eagle and Ms. Buff and the Attorney Sink, and I want to say something about your staff. You've got the best staff anywhere. And Ray Maxwell and the people that we've worked with have been top of the line. They've been first class. And the people of this county can be proud of every one of them. And I mean that sincerely. There's not been a cross word, there's not been an issue or wrinkle that we haven't been able to work out in a friendly and constructive and amicable way. I just thank you from the bottom of my heart for this recognition. Thank you so much.
I would like to add that these proclamations, recognitions will be added to the consent agenda tonight. Jesse, don't sit down yet. If the family and Jesse and your son, if you all want to come up here in front of us, we'll get a big picture from our staff.
Jesse, those cows, we're kind of getting them a little...
Back at you, because you've been great for us. I appreciate that.
Come on in here, Curly.
It's Curly from now on.
Must be looking at the hair.
He mentioned hardworking family. He forgot about Tracy's the one left out of that.
He said the family is hardworking.
Not Tracy.
All right. The family.
Thank you.
The Kirby family, please. Jesse, if you want to stay up here with them.
Yeah, and let's move the plaque somehow in this picture.
I didn't touch your butt.
Somebody want to touch you?
Hey, Curly. It's from now on. That's it. From now on, you got Kiger and Curly.
And hardworking...
And the hardworking Phil Beck family except for Tracy.
We got the whole...
No, Curly.
You got the lens cap on there, Beam.
We will go ahead and take a recess for a brief reception. If everybody would just make your way over to the, I guess, little buffet area. And please allow for social distancing, my script says.
We are back in session, everyone. Recognize Commissioner Chad Brown. A proclamation to proclaim the month of August as Child Support Awareness Month in Gaston County.
Thank you, Chairman Keiger. Would Ms. Adrien from Child Support Supervisor please come up? I was trying to find you. Did I say that right, young lady? Adrian, same thing. That's what I said, really. It's better than Curly. Come on up here, young lady. Whereas children are the best part of ourselves and the sum of our past and the promise of our future. They guarantee that our lives, values, and dreams will flourish long after we are gone. And whereas children are entitled to financial support from their parents. And Gaston County continues to improve the efforts at child support collections. And whereas Gaston County applauds those parents who support their children and make child support payments consistently to provide security for their children. Whereas in fiscal year 2021, approximately $15 million in child support was collected from parents across Gaston County. Whereas there are 7,351 child support orders in place to ensure that over 10,000 children receive financial support from their parents. Whereas increasing public awareness of the importance of child support through education, outreach, parental involvement will enforce the position that all parents are responsible for the financial, emotional, and physical support of their children. Now therefore be it resolved that the Gaston County Board of Commissions hereby proclaims the month of August 21st as Child Support Awareness Month. And reminds all of us that are invested in the future of Gaston County children, we can collaborate to make the future stable and bright. This to be adopted today on the 24th day, August 2021. Ms. Adrian, would you please step up and say a few words? Thank you so much and what you do. It's not a great time to be, but we're glad you someone there to get the coffers going.
Thank you. On behalf of the staff of the Child Support Agency with Gaston County Health and Human Services, I just want to thank you for the recognition and for bringing awareness to the hard work that's being done so that the children are financially supported in this community. So, thank you. We appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
It's a pleasure for the Gaston County Board of Commissioners to honor citizens who have unselfishly given of their time, talent, skills, and energies in service as an appointee to one of our boards or commissions. We gratefully acknowledge the work of the following individuals and a certificate of appreciation has been forwarded to them. Dr. Charles Meakin, serving on the Caramont Health Gaston Memorial Hospital Board. Taylor Drury, Rhonda Gottfried, Jennifer Step on the Family Advisory Board. Suzanne Deal, Mike Peters, Danny Wilson on the Historic Preservation Commission. David Keith Masters, the Jury Commission. Tara Conrad, Vanessa Lane, Matt Roten on the JCPC. Ralph Robinson Jr., the Library Board of Trustees. And Sharon Stiles, the Nursing Home Community Advisory Board. Commissioner Johnson, are you with us still?
Yeah.
Okay, well, she'll be back, I'm sure. Okay, this concludes our work session for tonight. The regular meeting will convene immediately. Oh, I'm sorry. For some reason, I was thinking it was on the regular agenda. We do have a presentation, the Health System COVID Response and County Continuity of Operations Update. And before I bring up these speakers, I'd ask the county manager, Dr. Kim Egle, to say a few-
...around the current data for the county. And then we'll move into continuity of operations.
All right. Good evening, Steve.
Great. Good evening, and thank you for having us this evening to present the current data metrics regarding the current surge of COVID-19 in our county. This is an important time for us to alert the community as to the increase that we're seeing in local cases and to really encourage folks to get vaccinated and use all proven measures to protect one another. So on this slide, what you'll see is the number of daily new cases since March of this year in North Carolina. These trends you'll see as we go through the presentation mirror those within our county. In January, you can see we reached our highest number of daily new cases. This was the peak of the pandemic. Once the vaccine distribution and uptake of the vaccine increased in January, you'll see begin to see that sharp decrease heading downwards as more and more folks in our community took the vaccine. This decline, as you'll see, headed into the summer. Many days and weeks in June and July, we were able to count the number of daily new cases on one hand. At the end of July, the Delta variant took hold in our county and state, and you can then see the sharp increase that's occurred since. It's now predicted that if we stay on the current trends that we are now, we'll reach January numbers in three weeks. This slide shows you by age group the incident rates of who's becoming infected. Again, these state trends exactly mirror what we're seeing in Gaston County. All age groups have seen a sharp increase, with the fastest growing groups being the 18- to 24-year-olds in red and the 25- to 49-year-olds in green. Both are at 400 cases per 100,000. The 65 and older population is half that amount, at 200 cases per 100,000 population base. Again, based on this population being so well vaccinated in our community of over 75% When we look at the incident rates rising in the state, you'll see here that the incident rate per cases for 100,000 have increased over the last two weeks by over 25%. And when we look at Gaston County on this map, you'll see we have a rate of 726 cases per 100,000, which puts Gaston County in the second highest category. And our most recent numbers are showing that for a two-week period, we're trending over 800 per 100,000. So when we look now at the Gaston County data with regards to daily new cases, you'll see again that high surge in January. The thin blue line that bounces up and down are the number of daily new cases, and then that red line you see is the rolling seven-day average. Just a little over a month ago, we were averaging, again, four to five cases per day. This was about four to five weeks ago. Now we're averaging 140 cases per day, and today's cases came in at 185, just today. This dramatic uptick in cases is again due to the Delta variant taking hold and the low vaccination rate in our community. When we look at the positivity rate, we again see the sharp increase. At the end of June, our positivity rate was right, less than 3% compared to nearly a little over 19% where we are today. A high positivity rate again shows a great penetration of the virus in our community and a greater transmission of the virus. And as we've said from the very beginning, we want to get this at or below 5%. And we were there. We were there for a good, long period of time this summer, and now unfortunately, we're trending back up to where we were in July. This is the one that, to me, jumps out alarmingly when you look at the hospitalizations. As we've seen throughout the pandemic, anytime you have a high number of daily new cases combined with a high positivity rate, surely thereafter, within a few weeks, you begin to see a high number of hospitalizations. As you can see here, this increase in hospitalizations again started in mid-July, shortly before that upturn, again, three to four people in the hospital for COVID. These numbers here are both include both Caramont and Atrium's inpatient numbers. Tragically, when there's a high number of hospitalized, you then have a high number of folks passing away due to COVID. And since July 1st of this month, we've had 22 Gaston County citizens pass away from COVID. And we've had a total of 468 Gaston County citizens pass away since the beginning of the pandemic. And surely, Dr. Davis will share more about the hospital data. So let's talk a little bit about the Delta variant. As we all know, the Delta variant combined with a low vaccination rate has caused our cases to surge again. The Delta variant is far more contagious than previous strains and can cause more severe illness in the unvaccinated. It's also important to note that while fully vaccinated people are becoming infected, it's much less common than unvaccinated people. And it's also important to understand that all vaccinated, all infected people can still spread the virus. Nearly all cases of severe disease, hospitalizations, and deaths are occurring in the unvaccinated population. So again, vaccines remain our best tool for preventing COVID infections and its negative health impacts. So to take a look at the impact of post-vaccination cases and the increase we're seeing, as you all know, these are called breakthrough cases when somebody's fully vaccinated and becomes reinfected. Even when a vaccine is as highly effective as the COVID vaccines are, there are breakthrough cases based on them not being 100% effective. Again, remember that Pfizer and Moderna's are 95% effective, so again, you are going to see those breakthrough cases. And as more and more people get infected, get vaccinated, you're also going to see an increase in breakthrough cases. But there's also evidence to show, as I'm sure you've heard in the news, that vaccines, for those who have been vaccinated over eight months ago, are proven to begin to wane a little bit, and so there again, we're seeing some breakthrough cases. But again, here you'll see the breakthrough cases do not make up the vast majority. 82% of those being infected are unvaccinated individuals. When we look at the attack rate increasing for vaccinated folks, I think this slide really drives home the message that vaccines also protect you from contracting the virus. Unvaccinated folks are three and a half times more likely to get COVID. The attack rate of the virus was 461 cases per 100,000 among the unvaccinated compared to 131 cases per 100,000 for the vaccinated. And likewise, the risk of dying from COVID is four times greater for the unvaccinated compared to the vaccinated, with the mortality rate of 1.05 cases per 100,000 for unvaccinated compared to .23 for vaccinated. So for my final thoughts in kind of putting it all together, as Public Health Director, I do have great concern for our community and where we stand right now, particularly among the unvaccinated. We need to get as many people vaccinated as possible so that we don't continue to see these cases increasing what appears to be exponentially. In this new wave, I also do have a concern for our public health workforce. As you all know, we will be part of the community's response along with our healthcare partners that we're so fortunate to have here in Gaston County to provide the third dose or the booster shots. So we will again be working closely with the community and public health folks who are unvaccinated are not immune to this either. We start having nurses go out or clerks go out, we put ourselves at risk to being able to respond to the pandemic. But I am encouraged because we have all the right tools we need to respond, and I want to emphasize that. We are at a totally different point from where we were before when we had nothing. We didn't have PPE, we didn't have testing materials, and we certainly didn't have three highly effective vaccines. We have all of that in abundance right now in our community. And we have great partners like Caramont Health and our other local providers that we work so closely with, and we are so fortunate to have their partnership to help reverse the trends. So with that, I'll turn it over to Dr. Todd Davis with Caramont.
Steve, let me ask you a quick question, though. You mentioned the booster. I've had two or three people contact me to see if I could tell them when that might be available, any-
Right. So what-
...age.
Sure. So right now, what they're saying is they're predicting around September 20th to begin booster shots for the non-immune compromised. If you're immune compromised, you can get a booster now, regardless of how long it's been since you've had your second dose or your first dose of Johnson &amp; Johnson. But for the non-immune compromised, around the September mark, we don't have a definitive start date, but that's the prediction date that we have to begin planning for. And at that point, it'll again start with, you'll need to be eight months since your last dose, and then it'll probably follow very much in tiers, kind of like what it did before potentially with regards to the, you know, hospital staff and first responders and things like that. But it should open to the general public fairly quickly because the vaccines are more readily available, and we have so many more providers available to provide that dose.
Last question. What would the dosage be?
The same as the one that you initially received.
It'd be just the third shot?
Correct.
Okay, thank you. Dr. Davis, good evening.
Good evening, Chairman. I'd like to just start by thanking the Commissioners for the work that you all have been doing for our community over the past months and years. I know it's been very challenging for you. I'm here to share some data, particularly about what we're seeing in the hospital and what's different about this surge than what we saw in the three previous surges as well. So to give you things in perspective, currently, as was what Mr. Eaton was discussing, our case rate right now is 63 cases per day per 100,000 people in Gaston County. At the peak, back in January, December, we were at about 112 cases per day per 100,000 people. Gaston County unfortunately has been generally about 20% to 30% higher in case rate infections than North Carolina or the national average. It's just something that's unique about our county. At the very highest rate back in early January, we unfortunately had to care for about 140 inpatients. This week, we're at about 105. So this is actually an interesting thing that we're seeing. If you would look at the case rate, you would expect we would have around 70, 75 compared to where we were, but we have more patients, and that is likely because the Delta variant seems to be a little bit more virulent. But honestly, every day, we learn more about this. And just when we thought we were really comfortable with understanding and managing the original variant, then the new variant comes in, and there's still information that's coming out quickly. One of the things I also wanted to share with you is when we talk about the patients we're managing on the inpatient side, it doesn't include the patients we're managing in our virtual hospital. So to deal with the increased patients and capacity, but also trying to find the right place for people to receive care, today, we're caring for an additional 160 patients that are COVID-positive at home. And most of these patients are requiring oxygen, things that typically you would get in the hospital, but we've created a pathway to care for these folks, to keep them out of the ED, to keep them out of the hospital, to keep them at home, and it's also a way for us hopefully to provide the right care for people at the right place. Mr. Eaton alluded to this, and I'd like to draw your attention to that third curve. You see, it's much sharper. And we, as we learned how to deal with the original variant, we recognize we often had a number of days to prepare for surges and things that were increasing. This is very different. Things happen exponentially faster, and we've had to do things, fortunately, we have some muscle memory in this, but we've had to make changes in how we manage our patients and how we deal with things, often day by day, which is different than what we experienced previously. And I wanted to share this. I think this is, this tells a whole different story. And again, this is Caramont's experience, but every day, my medical staff leaders are on collaboration phone calls with systems throughout the state. And so we're continually sharing information, trying to support each other to make sure that we're doing the right things, and we're- that we're doing the right things and we're acting proactively. So what's different about what we're seeing now is, so about 10% of our inpatients now are vaccinated in Caramont. About 90% are not. And the folks that are typically vaccinated, get admitted, are generally older than 55, and that's my age group now, and they often have multiple medical problems. So they're what we consider are more vulnerable population. But the demographics again have changed. Our inpatients now, whereas before, 2/3 of them were over 60, now 2/3 of them are under 60. So there's been a direct flip in the people that are being admitted. And I think probably the story for that is the blue port next to it. And it really goes to what Mr. Eaton was talking about. The highest penetration that we have of vaccination rates are in the oldest population. And there was obviously priority that the state and the country placed on those people to get the vaccinations, but there's less compliance as people go down in age. Our numbers are probably 7% to 10% what the North Carolina average are, Gaston County's. The other thing that we've recognized is, it seems now, and this is emerging data, and we don't have a lot of statistics, but this is emerging data, it seems like the folks that we're seeing in their 40s and 50s often are what we would call have severe obesity. It seems to be something that is a predictor for severe disease with the Delta variant. So that's really what we're seeing. It's again, this changing continuously, and I appreciate your time.
Thank you.
I think Mr. Peak's going to come up if you don't have any questions for me.
Thank you.
Dr. Davis?
Good evening.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, County Manager. Thank you for having us here this evening. It is truly an honor to be with you and work with you side by side each and every day. It's hard to follow those two gentlemen and the information that they share. So I will offer something that is incredibly profound from a personal perspective. I hate COVID-19. I hate what it's done to families. I hate what it's done to loved ones of families. I hate what it's done to the economy, to small businesses, to big businesses. I hate what it's done in our community with regard of creating a divisiveness unlike what I've seen in my lifetime. I hate that. But I will tell you, each and every day, I am continually inspired by the resilience of this community, by leadership like you. I'm inspired by the staff that I get the chance to work with every single day, that over the last year and a half, they've spent over 8 million hours tending to over 2,500 COVID patients in your community hospital. I'm inspired by physicians and nurses that put themselves on the line each and every day, under the promise that they made to do no harm first. That's their premise. And that's what this community hospital, your community hospital is committed to doing, is do no harm to those patients. And we will take every step alongside with your public health staff that have worked tremendously with us throughout this, to do no harm to this community. The decisions that we make matters. The decisions you make are incredibly complex, incredibly hard. And I have a tremendous appreciation for what you've done for us as a community and what you'll continue to do for us as a community. And what you do matters. And I'll give you just a brief example of an experience that we had during the vaccination clinic. We were, we had the opportunity, in the last four months, the first four months of the year, we administered over 65,000 vaccinations in this community. During that time, we had a day where the school system, we made it available to the school system on a particular day, and did over 2,000 individuals in one day. During that time, I had the opportunity to stand there and with Dr. Booker, was able to greet people coming and going. And I was standing there, a gentleman stops by and he says, "Do you happen to know anybody, the person that runs this place?" And I kind of, you know, you kind of always duck when someone asks you that question. I said, "Well, I might, I might be able to get word to them. What would you like for me to share?" And the gentleman said, "I have, I was in the military for over 30 years and had the opportunity to run logistics of tens of thousands of people, and I've never seen anything run better than this." And so I told him, "Thank you." And I told him, I said, "I'll tell you what, come back for your second shot, it will be better that time." And so he went down the hall, and apparently, he asked one of the staff standing down there and kind of talked to them the same thing. And they said, "Oh, by the way, you were talking to our CEO." And so he went on, and weeks went by, and I got a call from our marketing person and said, "Do you have a few minutes to come down here? There's a gentleman down here that wants to make a presentation to those that are working in the vaccination clinic." And I walk in there, and it's the same gentleman. It happened to be Colonel Dwayne Smith, who is the head of the ROTC at North Gaston High School. And he brought in a number of the ROTC cadets who had written thank you notes to each of those nurses and each person that worked in that vaccination clinic. And he shared his story of how we had incidentally met. We didn't know each other, he didn't know who I was. And he shared with them that I had promised him the second trip would be better, and in fact, we delivered on that. It actually was better the second time he experienced it. But as he stood there, he had a young lady by the name of Cadet Taylor Ellis standing there next to him. And he's pointed to her and he said, "Taylor, would you like to share with the group your experience and what this meant to you?" And Taylor begins to tear up and is just profusely sobbing and crying. And so she kind of motions to him, and he said, "You want me to tell?" And he said, and she said, "Yes." And he looked at the staff that were there and said, "Because of you and the work that you're doing in this community, Taylor's grandparents get to come to her graduation." You see, the decisions that we make and that you make change lives. And we have tremendous appreciation for your partnership and for your resolve to continue to encourage this community to take care of each other when no one else can take care of ourselves. Thank you for allowing us to be your community hospital and your community partner in healthcare. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
You get an amen from me. Does anybody want to share anything before they take off? Mr. Brown?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I guess I have questions for all. I just, these are questions that I got primarily from people who knew you guys would be here. One, vaccinations by product. Are you seeing one particular vaccine that is catalyst to, who are vaccinated people? Who are, is it the Johnson? Is it the Pfizer? I'm just asking, it's a general question. Do you see any difference in which ones they got? Was the first question that I was, wanted to ask.
Talk about breakthrough cases?
Yes.
Go ahead. Now, please. I've, you know, obviously, the Johnson &amp; Johnson and the Moderna have a higher efficacy rate in terms of being able to respond. So typically, that's what we're seeing most people taking up. As far as the data on which one is associated with breakthrough cases, that's not the data that we collect in the Health Department, so that I don't know offhand, but certainly, we could, we could seek that out.
Next question was, if they've gotten a certain vax, one of the three, will they be able to alternate? Were they something they should get different, or should they stay with the same brand on what they have now?
So we're waiting currently from the FDA's recommendations on how to manage that preliminary. What they've suggested is people stay with the same series if they're able. This is Moderna or Pfizer. But if that's not available, that they can move to another. There's not been recommendations about when the J&amp;J booster will be available yet, so that's still coming out. But my hope is that we'll have clear direction on that from the FDA and DHHS in the next couple of weeks.
And the last question, I guess, is contact tracing going on? I know, Steve, I talked to you about this in my own company. We had an outbreak. I mean, is it something that we're seeing with these spikes, or is it coming from particular industry? Let's just say, you know, one particular business who has a multiple outbreak case, or is it just still across the board?
It's so widespread. It's so widespread. It's not coming from any particular area, it's coming from all over. And that's why we tell people just, it's, the only way we can drive this, these numbers down is to surround each other with vaccinated people. Because we have to assume that everybody is potentially positive. And now, with breakthrough cases, you even have to pretend that, and assume that potentially somebody who's vaccinated could potentially be spreading the virus. It will only come down until more and more people get vaccinated. And currently, today, we stand for those eligible to be vaccinated at only 44% in our county. We've got to get that up closer to 70, 75%. And so really, that's where the rubber meets the road, is getting our community vaccinated.
Well, my last thing I want to do is thank all of four of you gentlemen. Everybody on the front lines out there in our community that has given, when there was not a vaccination, still gave it their time, especially the hospital, at the Health Department, Mark, your staff, our police. But I just want to say from the bottom of my heart in my community, thank you guys for what you do. And thank you for being professional, what you do about it.
Mr. Hokus?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just what I've noticed in talking with individuals and from reading, it appears this Delta variant is acting so different in terms of within the circle of influence. I know of whole families that the Delta has just went through within a period of three days. And the previous, the original COVID-19, the earlier variant, didn't do that. You can have people who are around them a lot, they never got it. I guess their natural immunity was strong enough to have fought it off, and the Delta variant is just able to overcome whatever natural immunity you may or may not have had. With that being the case, obviously, your folks, your retailers like Walmart, Lowe's, and your other big box stores, they immediately went back to masking for all their employees and have tried to encourage people, but that's not been very effective either. Am I right in my assumption that this, the Delta is just, it'll just, it doesn't take much for it to spread?
Right. So one of the things we look at in epidemiology is something called the R-not factor. So one person infected with the original strain of the virus, of COVID, would typically spread it to and infect 2.3 people. The Delta variant, one infected person is infecting between six and seven people. And typically, you're more contagious earlier on with the Delta variant. So you might only be beginning to show very, very mild symptoms and be highly, highly contagious and infecting those around you.
Thank you. All right. Gentlemen, thank you so much for taking the time. Oh, I'm sorry.
I thought you were going to go down.
I was looking at raised hands.
Okay, I'm sorry.
Thank you all for being here. And I've had this question come up in the community, and I'm going to talk about between antibodies and vaccine. I've had quite a number of folks talk to me, telling me, "I'm not going to get the vaccine because I already have antibodies." I don't know whether they've been tested for antibodies, don't know how much testing we are doing, either through the Health Department or the hospital. But that is, that is something that maybe we need to address, and if you could maybe address it tonight, why should a person that has had COVID and perhaps has antibodies get the vaccine? Because those, some of those folks are telling me, "I'm not, I'm not going to get it." So explain to us the importance of why we should.
Okay, I'm going to try and be a virologist, and you come in behind me and correct me. But so you could be, you could be, have the antibodies from being, from being infected with the original strain of the virus, but the Delta variant has changed. So you might not be able to protect yourself against the Delta variant compared to the original strain of the virus. So it's not as specific for, to fight off the virus as the original strain that you are infected with. So I'll turn it over to a real doctor.
Commissioner Early, there's two other reasons. First is what Mr. Eaton said. The second is from, if you have an infection, your immunity will, with time, wane. And the vaccine gives you the opportunity to increase your immunity. So everyone's immunity from any infection they've had will wane over time. So that's the second reason. The third is, there's been a lot of peer-reviewed studies that have shown that in infected people with a vaccine, with an antibody level of X, when they get a vaccine, that antibody level triples, which confirms significantly more immunity. So those are the three reasons that we talked about. Delta is different, and the new variants that we'll probably see after Delta will be different as well, that the natural immunity wanes, and a vaccine will allow you to increase your immunity. And vaccines have been, have been shown to give triple the amount of immunity that a natural infection antibody level is. Hopefully, that's helpful.
Sure. And I would also get you to maybe go into, a lot of folks, I talked to a county employee today. He told me, "The vaccine was rushed. This has been rushed through the FDA and approval, and they have still that fear. Why should our public not fear the process that had brought us to the vaccines? I know we have FDA approval on Pfizer now, not the other two, but I'm assuming that's coming. But help to allay some of those fears maybe in the public."
So I think, I think a couple of things. One, people always ask, you know, "What are you going to present on when you, when you go speak to people about COVID?" And I say, "The data." You look at the numbers, you look at the trends, it speaks for itself. As far as allaying people's fears and concerns about being rushed or about it being safe, I think we truly can start today with the fact that the FDA has approved it. And it's had a case study of 200 million people, which is the largest possible study ever. And it's come out completely safe and effective for all populations. So for me, when that came out, that, you know, you look at the data first, and then you look at something about, about what a large sample group that is of 200 million people worldwide.
Thank you. Thank you all for what you do, and we'll continue to do more soon. I'm like, I think.
Mr. Brown?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. One last thing I want to ask, and I want you guys to kind of put your heads together because all three of you guys are kind of important in our county, I guess, but why don't we try to educate, the same way you guys came tonight to educate? Me and Steve and Brittany have passed this around, to where we do a once-a-week question and answer, whether it be Facebook Live somewhere, because I think one of the things that happens, and I've used this example, probably the dumbest one up here, maybe Curly, I don't know, but I want you guys to say that we're doing this. I need it dumbed down a little bit for me to not talk about some, some higher profile issues. Maybe just bring it down a little bit to where we can start, and maybe that helps to just educate a little bit. I know that's a busy schedule for you guys, so I'm not trying to put you on the spot, but I'd like for you to think about it, please.
No, I really, I really like that idea, and I think, I think the more that, as you said, the more people that can get more information, it can become more and more educated, especially as things have changed as important. But also, what's been proven to be most effective in convincing people is a family or loved one encouraging a family or loved one to also get vaccinated. So it used to be, unfortunately, the doctors were looked to as the experts, and now really people, sorry, want to know, you know, what a family member, what their experience was and why it was important to them. So that, we were certainly happy to do that, and we'll continue to do that, but would encourage our citizens to speak to one another, encourage one another, and reach out to others who haven't been vaccinated, encourage them to do so.
Before you run off, let me just check to see if Commissioner Johnson has any questions?
No, I don't. I'm still here too.
Yes, ma'am. Dr. Eagle?
Yes, if I may, Mr. Chairman, I have a few comments I would like to add to the conversation. I'll echo a comment that Judge Codwell made relative to our employees, your employees, your county employees. They are phenomenal. Many of them are on the front lines as well. And I want to talk a little bit about service delivery, because some of those employees serve our most vulnerable citizens in the county. And those residents, those citizens, they depend on us 24 hours a day, seven days a week. And having an adequate staff to achieve that mission and be there for those residents is really fundamental. It's very, very much concerning to me personally. And I like Mr. Eaton's look at the data and am very concerned about the trajectory. So I wanted to share a little bit with you about where we are on our current vaccination rate for our employees. It's very similar to what we're seeing in the county. We're around 40% to 50% in terms of the rate of those vaccinated on our staff. And the financial and operational impact of COVID is very significant. And I wanted to quantify that for you, because we did a look back through December. The county has spent a total of $1.3 million on COVID sick time and medical plan costs directly related directly related to COVID. That's for things like screening and treatments and doctor's office visits and inpatient treatment in the hospital and testing. Due to the COVID sick time alone, those hours, we have lost more productivity than I imagined. It is equivalent to 29 full-time people working for one year, if you count the hours of COVID sick time. So, we have an opportunity to utilize federal relief funding to help incent vaccination for our employees, and that will impact those costs and it will impact productivity. It will impact much more than that in terms of some of the comments that Mr. Peak so eloquently shared relative to the impact on real people and their daily lives. I don't mean to sound cold focusing only on the cost and the productivity, but as your manager, I'm looking every day at service delivery. Achieving the best results for our organization, which includes minimizing costs and preserving our ability to deliver those services, is the purpose behind and the reason for the incentive recommendation. So, very briefly, you have the materials there in front of you, but I will share that the approach is simple. It is to provide all vaccinated employees at Gaston County, either previously vaccinated or to be vaccinated no later than October the 15th, an individual incentive of $250. And if the organization as a whole reaches 75% vaccination by that October 15th date, then all vaccinated employees will receive another $250 check. The item, as I mentioned, is included on the agenda tonight for your consideration, but I wanted to provide that context for you from my perspective. One additional piece of information that I just learned, several of you have asked about the dashboard that we used previously to track our data. We have an IT issue we're working through. That should be back up and available within the next week or so, so I wanted to share that with you as well, so you can have access to the data on a more frequent basis. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Thank you, Dr. Eagle. I'm going to hold off because I'm going to pull this item when we get to the consent agenda, and we'll get into it more than in the work session.
That's not my question.
Okay.
You almost made me forget my question. Yeah, the dashboard. When we get that back up, can we just keep it up even if the numbers start to go down, at least for the foreseeable future? A lot of citizens really appreciated that.
We absolutely can, and one reason behind pulling it down was some discrepancy between the state calculation of data and the timing in our calculation, but we believe we've resolved that, so yes, sir, we can do that.
Thank you.
Okay, no fooling. That ends the work session. Oh, no, it doesn't.
Comment. Mr. Brown was, I thought his comment was very pertinent in terms of being able to keep the public informed. We have our and Gastonia's collective channel. I think we should do a weekly update. I think it should be done on Mondays, borrowing from Steve and Karamot's information, to do that on Mondays and broadcast it and reloop it, giving the past week's recap for the seven-day averages for the prior week. It's basically a mini dashboard, Tracy, but there are some people that won't interface with that, but they will watch their television. I think because of such a heightened concern, it warrants us using every arsenal of weapons that we have at our disposal, and I think that in itself would be a commitment to putting the information out there and letting people know. And as we move forward and as people heed the call or other people decide that it's right for them, and they make the choice, it's right for them to get vaccinated, we need to put our vaccination counts up on that by day and have that weekly summary. I think that would be helpful to the public. I think it would show our commitment for putting information out there. It's not Republican, it's not Democrat, it's facts. I think we owe that to the citizens of Gaston County, and to keep Gaston County open, we need to use that. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Mr. Chairman, I would agree wholeheartedly with that. I do believe the best thing that we can do as commissioners is to give people the facts. There is a lot of disinformation. At times, I don't know what to believe, and I think maybe adding with that is maybe some myths and facts, so people could, here's my belief. I believe if we educate the public, again, it's not Democrat or Republican, just the facts, I believe people will make the right decision for them and their families. I do believe there's a lot of disinformation. I'm college-educated, I've been a lot of different places, I've talked to a lot of different people, and I have found myself, what do I believe? And there's all kinds of theories and conspiracy theories and, you know, and I've heard from a lot of people in our community. So, I think facts, data, getting that out, you know, whether it's through the dashboard or doing a weekly televised program, I actually think that is our job. That's what we should be doing as commissioners, and also just having a time where you can maybe dispel some of the misinformation. And I think that's the biggest thing that we're dealing with. There's a lot of division in our community, and I think now's the time to probably come together, not fight over who's vaccinated and unvaccinated, and I think knowledge is power, and if we give people that knowledge, I think people will make the right decisions for their family. So, I agree with that wholeheartedly, Commissioner Brown and Commissioner Hovis, and hopefully we can maybe get some, quickly get some information on that and get that going. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
You're welcome. Anything else? Okay, that does end our work session, and we are now in our regular scheduled meeting. I'm not going to go through the introductions again, which is in the script, and we're going to go right into a public hearing. The commission will take citizen comment for public hearing on an authorization for the sale of real property for economic development and approve a Level IV economic incentive grant for Project Ashbury. Before we begin, let me outline the rules for the procedure. Citizens wishing to make comment will be recognized by the chair, requested to step to the microphone for their comments, they'll state their name and address for the record. They'll have three minutes for their comments. All questions shall be directed to the chair for response. The chair shall rule on all points of order during the hearing. Do I have a motion to go into public hearing?
So moved, Mr. Chair.
Mr. Hovis made the motion, Commissioner Brown made the second. Any discussion? All those in favor? Thank you.
Commissioner Johnson?
Pardon? Oh, Commissioner Johnson. I apologize.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. The commission will take comment on to authorize the sale of real property for economic development and approve a Level IV economic incentive grant. Ms. Leslie Campbell, EDC Director of Business Development, will provide a brief overview. Once she's completed her comments, citizen comment will be taken, and good evening, Ms. Campbell.
Good evening. We would like to approve the sale of Apple Creek Lot 9 to Project Ashbury and authorize the Level IV grant for their investment of a food manufacturing company on that property.
That's it, huh?
Yeah. Do you have any questions?
Any citizens wishing to make comment? Any commissioner wishing to make comment?
I'll make a motion. Or, you want to make the motion?
Well, we have to make a motion to close the public hearing first.
That's what we're going to do, close it.
Okay, Mr. Philbeck makes a motion to close the hearing. Mr. Fraley makes the second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Thank you.
All right, now I'll accept a motion for approval. Mr. Brown makes the motion. Mr. Hovis makes the second. Any discussion? All those in favor? Oh, hold on.
I would have a couple of questions.
Okay.
Just briefly, you said a food manufacturing?
Yes.
And what is their investment and what's their anticipated employee count there?
So, they are looking to invest $48 million in their facility, and they're going to hire around 230 people. So, it is kind of like a grab-and-go food service type thing. They do prepackaged meals that are sold at grocery stores and convenience stores.
Wow. Okay. Sounds exciting. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. All right, we had a motion and a second. All those in favor? We will sell it. Ms. Johnson?
Yes.
Thank you. Thank you for reminding me. All right. Are there any revisions to the business agenda or any items needed to be pulled? I'm going to pull Item R for discussion. Anything else? And now, I will also add, I was also going to add the resolutions for Judge Kirby and Judges Kirby and Caldwell that were presented earlier at the work session for adoption on the consent agenda.
Motion to approve the revised agenda with pulling R and adding the two resolutions.
Second. Commissioner Hovis makes the motion. Commissioner Philbeck makes the second. Discussion? All those in favor? Commissioner Johnson?
Yes.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we approve the minutes, the regular meeting of July 27th, 2021, special meeting of August 6th, 2021.
Took the words right out of my mouth.
Second.
Second by Mr. Brown. Any discussion? All those in favor? Commissioner Johnson?
Yes.
Thank you. Our next item is citizen recognition. Is there anyone signed up? Adam?
Yes, sir.
Do I hear a motion to approve the consent agenda? Mr. Brown makes the motion. Commissioner Worley makes the second. Any discussion? All those in favor? Commissioner Johnson?
Yes.
Thank you. It is unanimous. Items pulled from the consent agenda, which was Item R, which is green page to us this evening, to approve a COVID-19 vaccine incentive for Gaston County employees. Mr. Hovis, you're sponsoring it. Would you like to make any comments or yield to the manager or?
I have no problem making a comment, Mr. Chair. As a county commissioner, you heard Judge Caldwell talk about it's our responsibility to do the right thing, not to do something that we think is our thing or somebody else's thing or whatever, but we have to do the right thing. And to leave anything unturned, especially monies that are coming to us from the federal government that could incentivize our employees or anyone to become involved with protecting other county residents, employees beside of themselves or whatever, if that's the little nudge that it takes for them to do that, I think we should use that. As I talked to you, Mr. Chair, when you talked to me on the phone the other day in reference to this original conversation, I felt like that just to go off and offer a larger sum than $250 across the board, I thought that was almost like a bribe, and I took some exception of that. But as I thought about it, thought about the county shutting down and what we went through when COVID, original version of COVID came through and the impact it had on us and Gaston County leading the state, taking the initial action to do what we did, to protect employees, to protect citizens, we were in the forefront of that effort. For us not to recognize that this, and the graphs that they showed us tonight were actually worse than the graphs that I saw during the Karamot Board Meeting last night that I was on with Dr. Peak and, I mean, Mr. Peak and Dr. Davis and other board members, I was just shocked to see where it is, and their prediction is very, very scary. Whatever we can do, we should do, and I don't think, considering the costs that we're spending already, the costs that COVID has already cost us, I don't think this is exorbitant. Those federal monies that can only be used for certain things, this certainly does qualify, falls right in the middle of their wheelhouse, so to speak, of what those funds were intended to do, and I think we should use that because it could help us avert additional costs associated with dealing with this Delta variant of COVID. So, I wholeheartedly endorse the manager's recommendation, although I initially had some reservations about what we were trying to accomplish, but since then, I've also listened and found out that quite a few other counties and other municipalities across the state are doing similar-type actions, and we need to do what's best for us, and we are limited as the seven of us in terms of what we can do. But this is certainly an action that we could do, we could put in place, and I think it should be enacted upon and enacted, recognizing we're trying to keep Gaston County open. We want our employees not to be adversely affecting the public that has to come into our offices, and as we recognize, tax season is upon us. We've sent out tax bills. We've got quite a few senior citizens that as soon as they get that tax bill, the next day, they write a check, and they come to our county tax department to pay that tax bill because they want that tax bill paid. We don't need them coming into an environment where they're subject to having other issues that could be life-threatening, and I mean that sincerely, and I'd like to see us go ahead and move on. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you for your comments. I just, I'm still having a hard time getting my hands around this. It just doesn't seem right to me to go out and offer money to people to make a, in many cases, a moral decision. The manager stated we had under 50% vaccinated now. Is that correct? So, that's somewhere between 800, 860 people that are not vaccinated, and I just, you know, I can't see hundreds and hundreds of those people going out for $250 to get vaccinated. And I understand the cost of having people out sick, but it's just something that I just don't feel is right to, it's like, in my mind, it's like bribing people to go get it, and I, you know, I don't want a disagreement from anybody. I've got to live with what I'm deciding, and if I knew for a fact that everybody would go out and get it, I still don't think I could do it. It's just paying people to do something, and some of them will do it just for the money, and it'll go against their better judgment for what they think is right for themselves. So, that said, I will accept the motion. Mr. Hovis makes the motion.
Motion to approve.
Mr. Chairman.
Second.
Second by Mr. Worley. Ms. Johnson?
Yes. I just would like to say one thing.
Yeah.
At the end of the day, I believe it is our employees' decision whether or not to get vaccinated.
I can't hear her. Can we get that turned on?
One second, Kim.
Hold on, Kim, we're having a hard time hearing you.
If the control room could boost her volume, please.
Okay, try it again.
Can y'all hear me now?
Oh, yeah.
Much better. Thank you, Kim.
Okay. In my opinion, and yes, I was a county employee for 30 years, I think every county employee should be given an option whether or not they want a vaccine. I don't believe we should ever mandate anyone to do anything that they don't want to do. A mask is one thing you can take off, putting a vaccine in your body is something you can't take out. So, at the end of the day, I just believe that they should have their own choice, even with the incentive. If they don't want to get a shot, they don't have to go get a shot. That's all I have to say, Kim.
Okay. Mr. Hovis made the motion. Mr. Worley made the second. Any further discussion? All those in favor? All those opposed? Ms. Johnson?
Yes.
Okay. It passes 5 to 2. Thank you, everyone.
And Ms. Johnson is correct. There is nothing in this resolution or this action that mandates this action be taken by an employee. This is just an incentive. It's no more than that. And if I'm not, I will say this publicly, I want everybody to know, there will be a form that anyone can fill out to opt out of the payment should they wish to if they've already had the vaccine. I've had both of mine as of February the 8th. I've been fully vaccinated. I will certainly opt out. I'm not looking to benefit from this program in any way, shape, or form. I don't know that many people... I don't know that many people are, but everyone will have that opportunity to opt out, not to receive reimbursement if they've made that decision. I think it's the right decision. They should, and we'll have that number available as a statistic after all this is over.
All right, thank you. It brings us to appointments. Commissioner Fraley? Mr. Brown?
Mr. Chairman, I have one tonight for the travel and tourism application received from Mr. Philip McGinnis.
I'll second that. Any discussion? All those in favor? Commissioner Johnson?
Yes.
It's unanimous. Thank you. Mr. Hovis?
Mr. Chair, thank you. I have one. Gentlemen, we just thanked for being on this committee. He has now reapplied and is going back on of the Historic Preservation Commission, Mr. Mike Peters.
Second by Commissioner Fraley. Any discussion? All those in favor? Commissioner Johnson?
Yes.
It's unanimous. Thank you. Mr. Philbeck?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have several. I'll make those in one motion. Paul Rathbone Jr. for the Environmental Review Advisory Board, Francis Ha to the Historic Preservation Commission, Robin Chavis at JCPC, and Gail Hopkins to the Nursing Home Community Advisory Committee.
Who is the second? Commissioner Brown? Commissioner Brown made the second. All those in favor? It is unanimous. Commission?
Before you move on...
Yes.
Commissioner Johnson?
Yes.
Okay, do you have any appointments?
No, not this time, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Philbeck?
Yeah, I just wanted to remind the public that we have several positions open for those that are willing to serve, from Adult Care Home Community Advisory, Council on Aging, Family Advisory Board, Fire Advisory Board, Juvenile Crime Prevention, Parks and Recreation Advisory Board, Planning Board, and Region F Aging Advisory Committee. So if you're wanting to serve in a capacity in the community, we have plenty. Each commissioner has plenty of opportunities for you to serve.
Thank you. Commissioner Worley?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just have one this evening for the juvenile crime prevention council. Ray Rayner is seeking reappointment, and I would offer that as a motion.
Mr. Worley makes a motion. Commissioner Fraley, the second. All those in favor? Commissioner Johnson?
Yes.
I think it's unanimous. Okay. I've got two. Paige Willis representing the school system to the Family Advisory Board and to the Personnel Advisory Board, Jill Hendrick.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Hovis. All those in favor? It is unanimous. And is there any commissioner wishing to serve on the Farmers Market Advisory Board? If so, just let me know. You can wear a suit and tie to them.
If we don't have a commissioner, can we appoint someone from staff? Can somebody find that out?
It doesn't say or appointee. That'll be up to the attorney.
You want to make, can we do that? Well, there's a motion from Commissioner Brown that our attorney serve on that, and they're second by Commissioner Fraley.
Mr. Sink, are you good with that?
Does it matter?
Of course, yes, sir.
Okay. All in favor?
Of course.
All right. Motion made, second by Commissioner Fraley. All those in favor of appointing Mr. Sink to the Farmers Market? All right, it's unanimous. Commissioner Johnson?
Yes.
Commissioner Johnson?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Kim.
It's unanimous. Commissioner reports. Mr. Fraley? Mr. Brown?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I only have six I have to do tonight. I'm great, thank you.
Mr. Hovis?
I think Mr. Peak and Mr. Davis spoke on behalf of the Caramont Board of Districts. Everything's moving on with Site 2, the Critical Care Tower at the main campus on Court Drive is weathered in and steel's going up. Things are moving forward. We've got a lot of great things. We're ahead of schedule and on budget for all capital projects at Caramont. Hard to believe in these crazy times that our projects will be where they are, but we've been very blessed, and we're very thankful for the efforts of all of our healthcare staff in Gaston County for helping the public get through all this.
Totally agreed. Mr. Philbeck?
No committee reports. We are, I will say this, the homeless task force is still meeting. Hopefully, by December, latest January, but hopefully December, we'll have you report. I want to take a minute, just thank Steve Eaton at their health department. What a wonderful, wonderful job he is doing. I don't think any of us could ever dream of having COVID and everything that's going on, but he is doing a wonderful job. I respect you a lot, and I think you're doing a great job. I hear great things in the community. Also, many times you'll see this board vote on things. Sometimes we agree, sometimes we don't, but I am happy to say I do think this board is unanimous in doing what we can to help this community. We're always lobbying each other, challenging each other to do the right thing and look at different perspectives, and I just want to say and just take a moment, I don't do it often, is I enjoy serving with you, Ms. Johnson, and everyone on this board. It's a tough time. It's hard to find agreement. There are division everywhere, but I think we have great staff, and I think we have great leaders here, and I enjoy working with you. Thank you.
Thank you. Even Curly. Commissioner Johnson, any reports?
No, not at this time, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Commissioner Worley?
Not this time.
Okay, I'll just give a brief on the, a brief report on the college monthly meeting. Yesterday, we've greeted some of our basketball athletes Thursday, last Thursday at the block party. There were about 800 people out there. It was a very festive time. I will say that Mr. Gene Banks has basically stepped down as the AD, and Dicky Nutt, the basketball coach, will be also serving as the AD. What's so funny, huh? But...
I hope they're all calling Mr. Philbeck.
Yeah, I hope they are, too.
He's the baseball coach, but that's okay.
No, he's the basketball coach. The, they came up, the marketing team that the college hired came up with the Gaston College Rhinos. R-H-I-N-O, and there's the picture of the little booger. And I'll leave it at that.
Motion to adjourn? Okay, make it quick.
Is there any county attorney report?
We consolidated reports tonight. I have a few just very brief items, if that's all right with the board. And before we move on relative to COVID and the front lines and the thank yous, I really need to call out publicly the work that JIMS has been doing. They are also very much on the front line responding in the healthcare setting and have just done tremendous work, so I wanted to say thank you publicly to Mark Lampier and his staff. Two very quick items on my update. The first is related to the ongoing work for the Piedmont Lithium Project. We have started that work and are making some very good progress. We had a site tour of the site last week. All of the work related to due diligence and research is well underway. We have several experts that we're talking with in terms of engagements, and some of those initial conversations have taken place. We had one earlier today. So all of that to say, of course, more will come later, but that work is well underway. The second item relates to some background I shared with you all last week. We will receive the old Belmont Middle School property in late September. We anticipate the action from the board, the school board, on the 20th of September, so we can then at that point begin marketing and begin the process, but no action immediately, but wanted to put that on your radar for future direction and discussion, and that is my report.
Thank you very much. And yours was blended in there?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
Are there any other matters to come before the board this evening?
I just wanted to thank Dr. Kim for the work that she's put in over the last little bit and Don and the staff, and it's been, it's been difficult, you know, long hours, late at night, and minimum after nine, you're not available, but thank you guys for what y'all do.
Any other matter? That concludes our meeting for tonight. Our next work session is September 14th here in the Harley B Gaston Public Forum Courthouse. Thank you for watching. Do I hear a motion to adjourn?
Motion.
Mr. Worley made the motion. Mr. Fraley made the second. All those in favor? It is unanimous.